Okay, well let's call this meeting to order. It's October 9th, 10 o'clock. Roll call.
Here.
It's my heat hammer.
Here.
I thought you just gotta tell me. I'm here to make part of me here. Approval warrants and claims.
I move we approve those. Second?
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Approval of the minutes of last meeting, September 23rd, 2019. Any additions or corrections?
I don't have any. You good, John?
Yeah, looks good.
Motion carries.
Approved.
Okay. Discussion possible action regarding monthly appropriations.
I mean, we need to accept those? They up, they good or down?
Down, I believe.
Up and down, up and down.
From what I'm reading, we may be on a downhill slide statewide. And so that's gonna entail us, I'm afraid, you know. Hundred and thirty-four, I think we were a hundred and forty-six last month. Does that tell you anything?
Does that sound like I'm writing real loud? Or is that just me?
It's come loud.
Huh?
Sounds like you're pushing hard.
No, I'm fine.
Maybe your ears are something.
Yeah, something. I rested them up two days. These are dogs. Think how they think now when you're sick. I was sitting there in a chair, woke up. That dog's sitting there pawing me. He's sitting there in the dark on his paw and waking me up. Woke him up and he licked me and laid back down. He's just checking on me.
I thought you needed to wake up and breathe or something, huh?
I'm sure you're alive. Somebody's gotta feed me.
Yeah. Did you put some bees on for you today now or are you doing it? I don't touch anything but near ya.
I'm still contagious.
Where are the bees?
Daddy, my wife takes humerus. She can't get sick in any way. That injection stuff that knocks her immune system all down.
Oh, yeah.
She was nuts. She'd come home dragging that stuff. That odor killer stuff.
Well, she picked it up down there at that hospital. I wonder if she didn't get it.
Yeah, it is.
Her dad done super.
That's good.
I know, but I mean, my point was, if there weren't a chance you got it there.
Yeah.
That's good, John.
Okay. Number seven. Confirm this through monthly reports for the following exceptions of its health department. County clerk, court clerk, sheriff's office, and electable.
We got them all.
I move we approve.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And I'll have sheriff on next meeting.
I think that's the first time. Remember, got them all.
No, we don't have the sheriff.
Spoke to him.
Yeah. I didn't put them on. She didn't think she had it ready.
Morning, Kim.
Morning. Are you feeling better?
Actually sent her a picture of a toilet seat that had scales on it. Said, do you need this?
Okay, we ready? Discussion and possible action regarding the 4H Week proclamation. Here's the proclamation that's brought to us. And the club of rugs sent us the cookies and a card. And it says, whereas Woods County Commissioners are proud to honor the Oklahoma 4H Youth Development Program of the Cooperative Extension Service for 110 years of experience-based education for youth in the state of Oklahoma. Whereas Oklahoma 4H seeks to provide a comprehensive education experience reaching the head, heart, hands, and health of young Oklahomans in Woods County and each of Oklahoma's 77 counties that provides leadership, citizenship, and life skills to our youth, resulting in well-educated, self-directed, productive members of our society. Whereas more than 150,000 urban, suburban, and rural youth participate in 4H activities with more than 6,000 volunteers who dedicate their time to make the best better across Oklahoma and hail from diverse cultures, socially, economic backgrounds. Whereas Oklahoma 4H program truly is as old as Oklahoma itself and has a rich tradition in developing positive role models in the state and nation. It continues to develop character and instill values through innovative educational programs. Now, therefore, be it resolved that the Woods County Commissioners hereby designate October 6th through the 12th, 2019 as National 4H Week in Woods County. And commence the Oklahoma 4H Youth Development Program with Oklahoma Cooperative Extension Service and 4H members, volunteers, leaders, supporters, and extension educators who have made the program a success. So be it. I'll make a motion.
All in favor?
Aye.
Go farmers, go. For little farmers.
It's a good head start program. I'm just gonna plug it a little bit. That's for the kids at five and up to nine, five through eight. My wife kinda took that upon herself to have that deal here in Woods County. And she's got twenty-some kids knocking the door at thirty that are participating in that after school once a month on Wednesday.
That's a pretty good deal.
Yeah. I think it's one of the better things we can do to, you know. I've always said we pay for them. We either contribute to bills like this or pay for them to be upstairs. Maybe we think we find something or some interest that keeps them out of trouble.
Just helps one, it's worth it.
Yeah, I think it's a great program. So, anyway, all right, we'll move on from that. Discussion possible action regarding the use of courthouse stage lawn for the spooktacular on October 31st.
I say we let them do that.
I agree. All in favor?
You got the costumes for all your little spook shit?
Number 10. Discussion possible action regarding the use of courthouse lawn for the Alba Community garage sale on October 19th. Sounds like another good.
See that? Motion, I'll second it.
Okay. That'll work. All in favor?
I'm sorry, I wasn't.
Uh, community guard garage sale for.
Hey.
All right.
There's your costume ideas right there. It's a garage sale. A lot of stuff.
Do traffic cones, that'd be easy.
We have one already, we just gotta get them. The kids came up with them.
They good ones?
They're an all-day group, so it'll be pretty cute.
I think that's cool. Clay tossed them one time and they were up at Hayes, dressed up like the Flintstones. Clay looked hilarious.
I bet so.
Okay. Number 11. Discussion possible action regarding the use of courthouse lawn, stage, and parking area for the NWOSU Homecoming Parade on October 26th.
I say we do that. I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye. When's the Halloween 31st?
Number 12. Discussion possible action regarding the rebid of District 3 Loader Bid number 1920-05. So you're up.
Yellow house is offering 42. Bitterdoo is 58,000.
That's all on?
Mm-hmm.
And all that right?
Mm-hmm.
I'll make the motion we accept the bitterdoo for 58,000.
I'll second it.
All in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Okay. Number 13. Discussion possible action regarding the revised SAC and FOX National Divinum Detention Center contract for the year of 2019-20.
And the price that didn't change, but they added two more paragraphs to it and it's got government law and, anyway, 11 and 12, the ones that they added.
Like tribal law or?
I, I never.
Yeah, it is. And it says that their tribal court shall have exclusive jurisdiction over any dispute which arises under this agreement. See to the party shall submit and hereby consent to such court. Exercise of jurisdiction, any judgment against the SACs and FOX nations shall be limited to declaratory or injunctions by legal. I don't know about that.
I don't either.
I think, I think that Ryan needs to look at.
That's what I wanted to.
I mean, just, and I'm not trying to, but I mean, I think, I don't know if it's legal for us to do that.
Right, okay. That's what I'll find out.
Or I don't know if it's legal for them to do that to us. That's where I'm getting at.
So do you know action?
Yeah.
Now I can bring it back.
Okay. A little legal counsel.
Sounds good.
Well, it sounds like it falls out of the state's hands and just into the tribal's court.
Yeah.
And I don't know if we need to be involved in anything like that.
Right.
It's above my head, is what I'm trying to say. So, do we even send any children over there to that place?
We have in the past, but we haven't this year.
Cause each one of them's kinda specialized in their own little thing, right?
Yeah, kinda depends on who's got room too.
Mm-hmm. It does.
Okay. Number 14. Discussion possible action regarding the September 2019 detention transportation claim in the amount of $120.68.
Just page in the next page.
They did it, so I'm supposing we need to.
We need to get a note back.
All seconded?
All in favor? Okay. Number 15. Discussion possible action regarding the 2020 holiday schedule.
No holidays. What's the, what's the holiday here in a day or two?
Columbus.
I couldn't, I said, I don't know, guys. You got a holiday coming? I said, if you don't know what it is, you don't deserve to give it. Well, they said, what it is? I said, I don't know, but I'll find out.
And here's the governors.
It's on Monday.
So we're following all of it except for we get the good Friday in Columbus that they don't do.
Okay, I'm good. We're leaving it. That's essentially what we've been doing. And Christmas falls on what day, 2020?
Oh, Thursday and Friday.
Okay.
So it falls on Friday, so they're observing Thursday and Friday.
Okay. So that'd be Christmas Eve.
And Christmas, yeah. That was the name. So.
Okay. Yeah. I'll make the motion we leave it as it has been, essentially is what that amounts to. But I'm gonna wait till John looks, see if he's got any issues.
Can we call Columbus Day, Native American Day, and just do Columbus Day in Indigenous?
We should.
Yeah. That's mine, but.
And you're the one that signs that.
All right. All in favor?
Aye.
All right.
Holiday for Spanish explorer.
I don't think Eve is the one that found it.
No, Eve.
Found Mary Presley, but I wonder.
Well, Cuba or somewhere like that. Indians would say, well, I hope he don't come over here.
All right. Number 16. Discussion possible action regarding the 2020 regularly scheduled commissioner meeting.
And they're all on Monday except for one in May on the 26th. We'll have to have it on Tuesday because of Memorial Day. Yeah, yes, holiday.
Holiday.
So, anyway, they're just a regular, and I'm, I'm not so good.
You just tell us.
I need you guys to approve it.
Still it's in the clock?
All right. I'm, I'm good with what?
Still it's in the clock?
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Just wanna make sure.
We'll do that, and that way, that even looks better.
I'll make a motion we approve it.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Can I take a picture of the shelf?
Yes, I'll be sending those out to everybody too, to the sheds and stuff.
Number 17. Discussion possible action regarding ODOT bridge inspection selection resolution. And what this is, is our choice if we want to do something besides the CED, but this is to verify, we want them to do our bridge inspections, which I think is working well in the past. I mean, where else? You got any other?
I ain't listening there.
I'm thinking, oh, it's about CED doing our bridge inspections for the next year.
Instead of somebody else, or we want somebody else to do it, or whatever you got.
You make the motion.
Yeah, excuse us everybody, I'll make the motion.
I'll second it. All in favor? Number 18. Discussion possible action regarding the court clerk's computer to surplus and junk at one HP desktop computer ID number J250-16. No work.
I'll move it to be junking.
I'll second it.
To surplus and junking.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Number 19. Discussion possible action regarding District 3's purchasing a new cat greater from Warren Cat sourced well with financing included Form 120B.
It's gonna run forever, right?
Sure.
All right.
Got it for the day to die.
I didn't say we would never have to work on it, but it will keep running.
There's your packet. I don't know what papers needed. Can you bring them? Very good.
I forgot everything.
Okay.
I talked to Jennifer too, and I told them since this is CAT 5, I'll have to send it back so they can fully execute them. And I'll request that they mail a copy back to Jennifer, fully executed. That's what I did with Alphalta County, and it worked out great. They sent them straight to her.
You got X marked in the spot where everybody needs to sign.
And I just put CED number eight, Alba Dog.
You guys don't all sign the sales agreement, do you?
Just the commissioner, I think.
Yeah.
We just signed the 120B. They're due now. I think the 120B, all three of us agreed that Woods County is to that.
This has got the assignment, the scheduled payment, and it actually has highlighted, cause these are CAT docs, so it actually has a highlighted place for each one of you.
Want to just start right at the bottom?
Yeah. These two I need just you to sign. This is just a sales agreement.
Ten.
Ten.
Nine.
Two-nine. So this is right here? Just keep them coming? All this?
That's just the tribal.
I can't read what the hell that says. Can you read that little bitty shit?
Yeah.
Huh? Read it from right there.
No, I can't read it from here. I'm not sitting right in front of it. I can read where you're sitting. It's just telling where the warranty is, the 60-month premier warranty that's on.
You got that memorized.
Well, I do, but I can still read it.
I can too. I was just checking. Sixty months, 5,000 hour travel time and mileage. You're just highlighting that?
Yes.
I don't have to sign there?
No.
That page 60,000, that one.
Check those. It's just basically telling me we're gonna be able to monitor the technology. I'll sign foot. And I just need your signature there.
Since you're climbing, I'll take that as a motion.
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay. I'll just start passing these around in groups with each face. That way, if you want to read it, you can. That's, this is just the end.
I need to sign, and they do.
Is there a second?
Yes. Well, so, yeah, somebody's gonna second when we go.
All in favor?
You can't sign where you, you gotta sign above it or?
Just on, yeah, right above it, on that where it's highlighted. Yeah. You're right.
You're swagging. You can't sign on that yellow. You gotta sign above the yellow.
No. Yellow's just showing where you need to sign. Here's the assignment sheet. Those are just, that's just telling you what you're signing. That's just the end.
You want me to do it first?
It goes to her.
Yeah. We'll keep them there that way though. I won't have to resort them. This is the assignment sheet. So it's just how many words it is. Same thing, you sign above. Your signature. Commissioner. No, right here.
Here?
Yeah.
You sign there?
Yeah. Signature, print. Okay, print. I just need their signatures, what matters.
Yours on.
I bet.
Is that, does this go with it?
Yeah. I was passing them around in case you guys wanted to read, cause it's just in section that has.
Nobody signs over here.
We do.
Okay.
All the commissioners on the right, just where it's yellow is where the commissioner is signing. Anything else?
Sign above the yellow. And this goes over here?
Now let me have that signature. They're not passing around, nobody's reading it. I won't pass it over to the funders.
Same thing here?
Yeah. Just sign your name. Why is you?
I'm gonna try. There ain't no sign on it yet.
Why? You can sign on it.
No, my pen don't work.
Oh, I got you. Yep, here's the scheduled payments. Not have a scheduled. Yep, here's the scheduled payments, and I have a scheduled payments.
That's almost the...
Did I get a copy of that?
Absolutely.
John Dear yellow. I just was going, we're not, we're not, John Dear.
You know, cause all...
That's why I can't sign with it. That's why it's not working.
I'm just curious, maybe there was a difference.
Call Jason, tell him that. That one is just you. This one's just on the insurance, do you want me to get a copy? How did we do that? Did a... I know you guys, you guys get your insurance through the CED, right?
Right, it's through the ACC.
Or through ACC.
ACC, uh-huh. Yeah.
Can I get a copy of that to send back?
We just done that, didn't we?
With this to cat?
No.
Just do the H church.
Yes.
Send back to the docs.
Yes, and I may have it on the computer where I can just send you the whole...
I signed it. I signed it.
Could possibly, I mean, it's been a while back. We approved that, we have to do it every year.
Yeah, what, apples?
Yeah.
Yeah, we do it July 1st, right around there. Sometimes we do.
Well, sometimes later when we get the new premiums, isn't it?
Yeah, that form's just requesting that, so, and then this one's just... I just need to, this little slide sheet is just asking for a copy of the minutes.
Okay, after, okay, so that'll be on the 21st that they'll produce minutes, so, okay.
And then I just got your tax information and a copy of the payments.
Okay, awesome, yeah, if I could get a copy of that, actually, if I could just...
Actually, you can, this is for you anyway.
Oh, okay, good.
I don't need this part of it.
Okay. Great. Thank you.
And she has the source file information already, so...
Oh, you need the test, Matt?
Oh, I guess I do, sorry.
Just so that, I'm gonna, so, just requesting on there, or somebody?
Do I?
Oh, he's got some hand sanitizer on his hand.
Huh?
I was, Amy's stirring it up over there.
Okay.
She's over there eating.
I'm taking a bath.
Did you get milk?
Can I drink your coffee? I don't get dangerous.
You gotta make this go well.
Don't sell them under my name.
Yeah.
Golly, I won. One bad.
It's not just governance, there's two, soft sauce seed, yeah.
Better get one, Amy. Very contaminated, huh?
I don't, you need to do that one.
Yeah, I guess, is that all?
Yeah.
The end?
Yeah.
Wankins and then we're done.
Well, I meant for the grid.
Oh, great, yeah, yeah.
And they're delivering it to Tacoma today, well, actually, I changed it from your yard since the other grader was putting up was out at Tacoma.
Okay, number 20. Approve this, approve mine personally.
I knew we approved it.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
He did what, sorry?
Number 21, a motion to adjourn.
Don't make that motion.
We're done.